All meeting of July the 3rd, 2019, Town Council order. Rule call.
Dylan Culver.
Suzanne Unbaugh.
Randy Snead, I'm sitting in for George Knoll, who is on a trip. And also note that attorney Derek Jones is also not here tonight because he's on a trip.
Sean Harley.
Lisa Ladey.
Stanford pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of the June 19th, 2019, your session.
I'll make a motion to pass minutes from June 19th, 2019, as written.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seen, passed. Citizens input. Mark, do you have anything on that, or you want something else? Citizens input? No? Okay.
Do you want me to think of something, Randy?
No. You were here, I just thought maybe you had something. Okay, old business. Jamie, there's something about the sewer and the roads?
Yeah, I'll start with the roads. They're moving along, we've had a couple issues in Woodland Trail. There's some soft spots in there, we're gonna have to dig them up and get the base right. So, that's why they're delayed. This week, I think they'll be moving forward again. On it, maybe either later in the week or early next week, we'll be paving and finish out West U-Corps and Woodland Trail. So, Colonial Corp, moving good on that, so they're getting a lot done. I don't know if you've been out by there, but it's moving along. So, everything's moving. The other thing I have is, we need to update a sewer lift station in Woodland Trail. Gotta put a couple new pumps in, we gotta update the controls, I wanna get everything right out there. So, we're looking at about eighty-five hundred dollars to do that, so I just like to get approved and move forward with that.
Yeah, definitely.
We may have a problem with the-
I don't have a problem, it needs to be fixed.
If it has to be fixed, do it right. We don't have any problem with that.
Alright, I'll get it going. That's all I have for right now.
Let's just do all that work after we fix stuff that's-
Right. Because there's gonna be quite a few people hooking up to it, so... Next thing we've got on the agenda is a letter to the board members, this is to the volunteer Chuck, I have a, I do have a question for you. Have you looked at this letter? Do you know what we're talking about? Because you've kind of set up the BZA and the, we have one, I can't think of it. Planning Commission. Alright, see that letter?
I have a little bit of a problem with it.
Okay, and that is?
Why are we demanding these people? I would prefer that you do not send that letter to the BZA or to the Planning Commission. I don't think it's put in the right spirit or the right direction, and I would rather they not get it. We've just filled the boards, they're coming to the meetings, they're doing what they're supposed to, and they know what their obligations are. I'd rather it not go to those two groups, in my opinion.
What are the other groups it would be going to?
Redevelopment. Board.
R-Board. Is the Redevelopment full, or does it still need members?
They have had a couple meetings, and they didn't have enough members.
They have a quorum count, clearly.
And what about the R-Board? You're in the R-Board?
No, not, George is.
George is.
The R-Board has been okay.
Okay, so-
These questions have been blanked.
So, do we want to send this letter out to them?
No. I mean, we got a good recommendation with someone with credibility, and clearly we have the other boards filled just to max. You know, there's an obvious issue with one of these, or, you know, one of these boards.
I agree.
I think that's more of a personal issue than publicly announcing it like that.
I agree with Dylan to an extent on that as well, because it seems like it's one board, and whose liaison to that? Or do we have a liaison on that?
I'm the Redevelopment liaison.
Do we need to take a look at people that aren't-
Definitely, yes.
-in there, maybe rewatch them?
And that's something that I was taking care of personally, that I was avoiding to bring to light. So, just give me some time, we'll take care of it.
Very well. I'm alright with that.
I think it should go out personally. They're, all the boards have had issues at times.
So, is the council, but it's negative energy that this need to be pushed? There's no reason for that?
To me, this is not negative. We're asking, we're thanking them for participating.
And we need to make an ordinance, say if you-
May I?
Go ahead.
But we're asking them to be responsible.
Yeah.
When you do commit to a committee, you do have a responsibility to it, and to the citizens of Argus, and to the other members. Sometimes we sit here waiting, are we gonna have a quorum? Is there a quorum? And then there's no quorum, so everybody goes home.
Then an ordinance needs to be made that says if you miss a certain amount of percentage of meetings per year, you will be disbarred, you will be removed from that board.
I think a nice letter reminding them would be better than an ordinance.
I don't know, we're all adults here, and we're held accountable to our positions, just like you just said. So, I think that's the proper way to do it, instead of publicly humiliating.
It's not publicly, this is a private letter sent to each person. It's not a public humiliation. It's just, it says, "Thank you for serving on the board." That's the first sentence.
That's not the purpose of it, though. That's the idea.
It's been recommended that we not send it to the BZA and the Planning Commission, so then should we send one to the Redevelopment, or give Dylan some time to work? Yes, Mark?
Has the BZA and Planning Commission always had a quorum?
Have they always?
No.
Goodness, no, that would be foolish to say that.
No, 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 I mean, I mean-
Before I came, we-
I mean, like, in the last year.
Since we've been working on it?
Yeah.
Yes, we've had-
They've always had a quorum?
We've had a quorum. But we've had to add members, because when I came in and we started doing, I just remember it was a training, learning process, we brought people in, and I think we have a good, active group now, on both of the sides.
I don't know, I, as being liaison, I would not like that letter to be sent out to the Redevelopment. I think there's some time. If you'd personally like to confront these people, then go for it.
If you always have a quorum.
But I'm not gonna do this, unless it's passed by the board. I don't think it should happen.
Personally, I'd like to give Dylan an opportunity or a chance to try to go along with what he stated, and I think that we owe him that, as liaison to that commission.
So, much time in the evening.
Give me until next meeting, I'll talk to each member personally, and find out their true heart in the matter, and tell them they need to make a decision. Because that's essentially what this letter is saying, they need to make a decision. You made a commitment, you either need to follow through or not. And I would rather say that to face-to-face than just send out some words.
I wouldn't have any trouble giving it to the next meeting.
I don't either.
So, we're gonna forward off on this then to the next meeting.
Is that the decision? Are we tabling it?
I think we should.
Would you like to see this?
I don't know.
I mean, to a, I mean, I'm asking you personally.
I'd like to table it to the next meeting.
Then we get a motion to table, don't we?
I'll make a motion to table the letter to the commissions to the next town council meeting.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Passed. So, that will be tabled. Dewey Street cleanup. It's, they've already broke our ordinance on cleanup, am I correct on that?
I brought this-
Right.
Up. I don't think we're ready to formally address it. I think we need to start looking into it. That was my whole issue.
Have, does anyone know, has- It's me.
Kenzley.
Now, the police, have they issued any tickets or anything to them?
I'm not aware of that. It's on our code enforcement.
So, that should be maybe our first step, is get them to go down, because part of the deal when they got the-
The address is here.
Variance, that's three, I'm not sure, three, twenty-five, maybe, West Street?
It's West Street.
West Street, not Dewey Street?
Well, it's cornered west and Dewey, basically the property.
I think the address is West Street.
I do too, I think the mailing address is West Street.
Oh, I don't have it in here. I thought I had his report in here, but it's not, it's something else.
Well, if Cory hasn't been, if Cory hasn't been down there, maybe he should, because the way I understand, when they were given a variance, or they were promised they would clean up the-
Yes.
And it hasn't changed.
I understand that meaning, yes.
Right, nothing's changed, the weeds are still high, junk cars are just sitting around, nothing is any different than what it was. So, we will pass this to Cory, and let him go first, and he can do whatever, how, does that sound fair on that? Everybody agree on that? Because we gotta do something about it.
You know, you need to start the, kind of, first, then-
Right.
Go do the right channels doing that.
Okay.
That way, we don't get ourselves ahead of the-
Just present it?
Yes, sir.
If I could. Cory is definitely the first step that you need to take. I was there, there was probably twelve, fifteen cars in various states of disrepair, and many of them will never see the road again.
Correct.
Unless it's on the back of a U-Haul or a tow truck. So, I think that's the thing, in researching this property, there's been some, let's say, serious delinquencies in their tax payments, that properties have been up for tax sale four different times since 2005.
Right.
So, there's about four different parcels there. I think that we need to not only take what Cory is going to do, he needs to be the first person in there and get something moving, but we need to start addressing everything else, and push this forward. They need to get compliant, and do what they're, they've said they would do, and what they're supposed to do, or have them find a different place to run their business.
Chuck, have you kind of experienced down there, do you see any environmental issues, anything like that, that needs to be addressed, or?
They've got those vehicles setting out there, there's oil and gas leaking all over with what they've already got, and we don't know what else is stored back in the buildings that we can't see. So, there could be environmental issues that way.
So, is Cory on this weekend?
He will be back Friday.
You'll get a hold of him?
I'll get one.
Okay.
I'll call him tomorrow, or I'll call him Friday, I won't call him tomorrow.
And you can let us all move in by text or email, okay?
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck, appreciate that. Other old business, anybody else got anything? Not, we'll continue with new business. Jerry, this is about the hiring bond for-
Sure.
You wanna present that?
I will. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present this. A number of years ago, this community felt it was important to take some necessary steps in terms of bringing businesses to this community. I applaud you for that. First action was to purchase, nearly about seventy-five acres. And in doing so, you set a path for, have a path success, in terms of bringing new businesses to the area. Shortly after that, went through a process to hit that property designated as sole ready. Actually, D.C. helped along in that process. And about that same time frame, we were contemplating and having discussions relative to make a factory center as well, and where are those items needed to be successful. So, land, sole ready site, discussions about make a factory center, and then on, that same time, we talked about what do we need in terms of a tool chest, so we have certain things, certain processes in place. So, with that in mind, council did adopt a economic development incentive policy. Within that policy, there is the opportunity for economic development revenue fund. So, this is what we're here to talk about tonight, is that process, what we refer to as EDR. And I have a lot of smart people here surrounding me, and they read, so if I stumble a little bit, they'll pick up the ball, especially this gentleman here, Jerry can hire a lot. I haven't said that. The action that we are recommending tonight is to begin that, that next step of that process, in terms of getting information and preparing Argus for issuance of a bond. There are, gone away, Baker Tilly, formerly Unbaugh, and I think everybody knows Todd Simmons, and they've done work for the town in other capacities, this would be a new capacity, but this is not uncommon for them to engage with the community in that, in this particular process. In fact, I think you're involved with City of Plymouth with two of these as we speak, EDRs. And unfortunately, Barnes and Thornburg isn't able to be here. Randy RuPaul would be the attorney that would represent and develop the bonds, the Bond Council. Well, he would be the person responsible for the bonds himself, issuance of the bond in one language. When we talk about both these entities, their fees do not come out of town markets. In order to reiterate fees, they're both an obligation from the town as well. In fact, the way that, and what we hired, or what we're suggesting, Barnes and Thornburg, is these bonds will be set up, so there's no risk to the town itself. So, as we're going forward, please understand that what's being contemplated in the deal structure, and those items that are, the details are yet to be done. This is the next step, so we can start down that particular process. They'll become a little bit more flushed out as time goes on, and it's probably about sixty-day process, there are a couple lines, a couple things we have to do internally to prepare that, but I think we have a pretty good handle on what to do and how to do it. So, with that being said, I wanna keep it kind of real high level, not a lot of details, because the details aren't before us right now, but Julian's a pretty quick. With that being said, if you have specifics with regards to Baker Tilly, and what they will do as a analysis and a financial projection, as I think Todd is prepared to answer those not specific to a deal, but for long. And I think Jeff Julian, he's MCDC's attorney, also is the councilperson for City of Plymouth, he's been in these particular processes before, so you can shed a little light if you want to understand a little more about bond issuance. I can tell you one thing, it is gonna be important for the town to, beyond hiring Baker Tilly, you have to make sure your attorney has bond experience and can review the, on the end of the council. With that being said, I won't take up too much time, because you might have some questions. And as I said, there's a lot of smart people here, and me to answer those questions.
Do you have any questions? Not yet. No questions? And if you, if I'm understanding-
I have a question for Jeff. Jeff, I read through the proposals here that we got, and you're pretty comfortable with that. I'm kind of in left field here, without Derek here to kind of back us up a little bit.
Well, yeah, I don't wanna step into Derek's position, and specifically advise the town on this, but I reviewed both, I think you have two engagement letters there, one for Baker Tilly, one for Barnes and Thornburg. And just say, as a Martha County attorney, they're a bit longer than the ones I usually write, but everything in there looks pretty standard. It is, and you'll see in the terms, the way a bond, any type of bond is typically structured, is the fees for the bond issuance come out of the bond proceeds. So, the town of Argus is not putting out any money for hiring Baker Tilly or Barnes and Thornburg, and with this particular type of bonds, EDR bonds, it's contemplated in the deal that the developer will be making those bond payments. So, again, nothing paid by the town itself, and no liability for the town in this particular structure.
I just, I am excited about moving forward with this process, but I am, at the same time, hesitant not having our attorney review it, so, I mean, that's where I'm at.
So, let me understand that, if it is not uncommon for a motion to be made authorizing a town official, in this case, President of Council, George Knoll, to engage with, or to execute the engagement letter upon review of the town's attorney on that particular, on those two engagement letters. So, this is a way that you can have your checks and doubts, but as Jeff said, these are pretty standard ones. Would you agree or disagree with the issue?
I was gonna mention the same thing Todd said, you know, something Baker Tilly, that if there's any issues that Derek may have with the agreement, whether you sign it tonight or later, we'll find, we'll give Derek with any questions that he may have or suggest of changes. I do wanna point out that our agreement is never the same, in terms of the scope of work that we're doing for any type of project. The form of the agreement is very consistent. There are two areas here I do want to point out. I am not an attorney, but on page three, you'll note that the state of Indiana does have a statute regarding anti-nepotism, and if you're not aware, we have a board member that is my cousin. So, we are pointing that out to be very transparent, and would ask if there's any issue from your side of the table, let's talk about it, but if not, we would like that paragraph initial, just so there's awareness and everything's clearer. So, that's the state of Indiana. We are also, under the watchful eye of the Securities and Exchange Commission, they have different rules, so on Exhibit C, we also need to disclose a conflict of interest. And so, under the client relationship, we have noted the same, that there is a relationship that exists. And under the SEC rules, we also need to, you know, what is our plan to deal with the conflict? I will be involved, but Heidi Anspahl, who I think you know, or at least know the name, will be leading the engagement. So, you may or may not see me again, but I will certainly be involved, but that's our way of, again, dealing with the conflict, and certainly Heidi and I will be working together, but she will be the person running the engagement on behalf of Baker Tilly. So, our agreement, again, sorry it's long, if it were up to me, it'd be two pages, but the state of Indiana, the SEC requires us to put all this stuff in here, so, again, we do have this conflict, it doesn't happen very often, and, again, we work for the town, and appreciate the opportunity. I was reminiscing walking in, I think thirty years ago, this was my first field work, this building wasn't here, and working with the town, so, again, appreciate the opportunity to do so again. And I know a lot yet to be developed regarding this potential project, so it's probably a little early to have any detailed questions, but if you have any questions about the process that we go through, and if you read this closely, our duty is to the town. And, again, we can talk about fees, and we're all, our main responsibility is to protect the town's interests in this type of transaction. We have done many, but we never treat this as a cookie cutter, because they're all unique. And that'll be the approach that we take here, and if there's ever any questions, Heidi and I are both available, probably should work through proper channels on that, but if you have any questions about the process, we and I have done many of these around the state of Indiana, and, again, they're never the same. So, as we go through this, our fiduciary responsibility is to the town of Argus, and hopefully, you've seen that before, and you'll see that again.
It's a no-brainer.
I move to accept the agreement with Baker Tilly.
A second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, so any other comments?
I'd like to add to the motion, I'm alright with the motion, but I would like to add contingent upon Derek's review as well, at least within the public record. But other than that, I won't get going forward, but I want Derek to put a losing on that as well.
I would like that as an addition, as well.
So, the motion is that we will accept the agreement with Baker Tilly with the going on, that Derek gets a chance to review it, and then we'll go over and-
Authorize George as the president, and move forward, contingent upon Derek, or however Jerry said it.
We still have a motion, we still have a second? Wait, wait.
And we wanna make sure that it's both engagement, not just the one.
I was just gonna do both separately, do separate agreements.
Good. I like that.
Okay.
You probably need to label which one you're talking about first.
We're doing Baker and Tilly.
Baker and Tilly, that's the one, is what the motion for.
Okay, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Action, motion passes for Baker and Tilly. We have one for Barnes and Thornburg.
I move to accept the agreement with Barnes and Thornburg.
Second.
I would like to add the same arrangement on that, with Derek's comments in there, like the previous agreement.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I just wanted to add for the record again, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of Barnes and Thornburg, but as you know, I have experience representing MCDC, I serve on the Plymouth City Council, I also represent a couple of school corporations. I've been through several bond issues, certainly not here this many times, but I've been through several, I've worked with different councils, and I can speak on behalf of Barnes and Thornburg about for them, that they also have extensive experience and are eminent and qualified for this type of bond. I just wanted to add that, since they're not here to speak, put themselves in.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we have a motion then, to accept the Barnes and Thornburg with the bond, and with, having Derek to have a chance to review it and get back with us on that, we have a second?
Authorize George to-
Authorize-
George to be in the team now, yes.
And also? We have a motion and a second, any other further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else need to be done with that, too?
I think we're done. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, thank you. And we do know Heidi.
Sorry, she couldn't be here. I thought-
Okay, the other thing we've got tonight, we have a ordinance, this is ordinance 2019-8, it's an ordinance establishing a town of Argus School Resource Officer Fund. And this fund is to be able to, as the school pays us back for the resource officer, to be able to separate the money from what goes into the regular police fund, and then what goes into this, am I correct on that, Lisa?
Yes. This fund will, we're hoping to take all the money from, or will take all the money that the school provides for the school resource officer, and put it directly into this fund, so that his wages can be paid from this fund. But just realize that we bill thirty days in arrears, so you won't see any of that, you know, in December, you, it'll be thirty days short.
Right.
So-
So basically it was 30 days behind.
Right.
Just like our town is.
Okay, this has been an ordinance. We have a choice. We can table it. Are we can pass it on the first reading or someone can suspend the rules and pass it on all three?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance establishing the town of Argus School Resource Officer and waive the rules and pass on all three readings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any other comments? Dylan, do you have anything to say?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Ordinance 2019-8 has passed. And we also have a resolution tonight that we have to go over. And this is just a standard resolution that we do every so often with M P A for the power tracker. You were all given a copy of it. You've seen that there's always a rate adjustment. And this is just, like I said, something to a regular basis. So we need to pass this resolution. Yeah, it went down a little. Sun's been heating up the solar panel.
I don't think I've got a copy of this. Later. Can you at least show her what the grade is?
Uh, yes. Do we have a motion to pass this resolution, 2019-8?
I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution 2019-8 for power tracker.
On second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Hey, Amy.
Amy, before we get to points, and I apologize in advance to Chuck. I took something off the agenda and I think I removed other new business with Chuck on there. So I apologize.
Of all the things.
We can back that up.
I know. And I do apologize, but you can let Chuck speak for me.
Chuck, if you have something, bring it for us.
Just wanted to give you a note on the trailers on U S 31. After our last meeting, I got an update on June 11th saying that they were able to secure transportation for the week after July 4th. I started about a week and a half ago trying to make contact again to make sure that we're on track. Everything's happening. I sent a couple of emails and tried phone calls. Didn't work. And so on June 27th, I sent a very strongly worded email and I did get a response back. Basically telling him that we would start the fine process and make that retroactive to the date he purchased them, if he didn't, to get them moved. He sent an email back saying that we're on schedule for the move after July 4th weekend. Sorry for the late reply. I've been sick for over two weeks. My recovery's slow. So right now, we should be seeing some movement out there next week. I do know that there's quite a bit of expense to it because they have to hire not only somebody to drive the truck, but they've got to have flaggers ahead and behind. And they can only drive so many hours a day. So it's going to be a process. But if I can see some movement next week, happy. And if not, then we'll go ahead and pursue a different.
These are going out in New Jersey.
New Jersey.
Should only be like a three day drive. They're allowed to drive 10 hours straight, I believe.
I think you're right, 10 hours.
Well, they have to be taxed for 11 on the C D. They can drive 11 with a half hour break.
Yeah.
I guess it's irrelevant, but.
Yeah, anyhow, they'll get it there. It's good. I'm glad that you've done this.
Anyway, that's, looks like it's moving forward. Sorry, we didn't talk about it before Jeff left, but Mr. Hui is the attorney for Ben Wompler. And he has filed for a motion in court for immediate possession of those to take them and dispose of them or whatever. So, and I let Mr. Asif know that. And I'm sure he's gotten his notification already. So hopefully, one way or the other, we've got two things going on and trying to push them as hard as we can. Wanted to let you know that.
Now, when they get these all moved, is there any cleanup or anything else they'll have to do? Or is that just?
We'll have to wait and see.
We'll have to wait and see what's left.
Most times they're all pour on mulch back in there anyway.
Okay.
So I've got that. And then besides Dewey Street, we have 429 Sidney Street. And that has been, that's my attention. Fun out there looks. It's terrible. I don't know if you've been back there or not, but it's worse than Dewey Street. Yeah, I mean, it is.
Where is Sidney Street, Chuck?
It runs along the tracks, runs along the tracks, back to the track, dead ends.
Is that the one that the railroad people were on?
Yeah.
And dead ends down there's a house or something that we, we used to have a wood shop or something and we changed the.
Well, no, that's the place though.
That's the place?
That's the place.
That's the place. But here, I'll just give you this is a quick overview of it, but it's worse than that, honestly.
Wow.
Yeah.
There must be three or four truckloads of different size pallets and stuff there. There's cars, everything. So it's terrible.
So this has been here for quite a while?
It's been accumulated for quite a while.
Is that off of Logan Street?
Yeah.
Yes.
Logan turns into Sidney?
So we'll be moving forward on that. Calvin Bailey is the owner and Scott Samuels is the tenant or whoever's supposed to be purchasing.
Who's dealing?
What's that?
Who's dealing?
Calvin Bailey.
Okay.
Have not been able to reach him. I think he's probably on one of his vacations. So haven't been able to reach him. The zoning is light industrial back there. And if you look in our book, you can have wholesale business warehouse, trucking terminal. And you can manufacture, process food or food products, manufacture assembly of cell phones, paper, fur, glass, leather, manufacture ceramic products, repair manufacturing, usable instruments, other equipment, building materials, sales yard, research or experimental, scrapyard, automobile wrecking. But he has none of those going in no business.
Right.
So.
Looks like it's a dump yard to me.
At least that would be a, that would be kind words to say.
Don't get down there. I'll take a trip down to the side.
You'll have to go down. You go down to the end, you can go back to the railroad property and turn around.
Okay.
Go back and go clear to the back side of this property. And see it there. So. Yeah, thank you. So we'll be moving forward on that. Got the trailers going, we got that going, we got Dewey Street. So I think we've got our hands full at least for a while and getting that stuff done.
That's just fantastic.
There's a couple others that were smaller, single homes that we're working on also. The other thing that I wanted to bring up too. And Jamie and I have talked so much. Did you put a copy in the packets? Okay, so you guys all have a copy then?
Yes, yes.
Okay. This was sent out March 11th by Michael A. Fishburne, Jr., Chief Wastewater Operator, Town of Argus, to the 4H board over there. I got kind of involved in it because of the new building going on and other things that are happening. And whatever, I didn't realize anything about this letter until I was over there and actually saw him taking out and closing up the dump stations. I've spoken with other municipal sewage treatment plants. I've spoken with professional assistants when it comes to that, as well as people that are on the fair board. We have campers that go over there during the fair week and bark. They, people stay in them as they've got their animals from the fair going on, whatever. Before they leave, they go up to the dump station, dump things out and go down the road. And then again, we have another influx during the Blueberry Festival. People come down here, stay, pay a fee to the fair board and then they go to the Blueberry Festival, come back and whatever. So, you know, for maybe four days there, there's a fairly good group of people that are there. They dump their waste and then go on. So I also sent a copy of this letter to Christine Stinson, our health department. And I can give you her reply. She couldn't be here tonight. So I sent her a copy of this letter. And basically it was just two sentences. Please look this over and let me know of any holes that you see in the logic or science. And I'm meeting with the town of Argus tonight. We'd like to discuss it. Those are the two sentences I sent to her. Her reply back was, I would have an objection to the characterization of what's being introduced into the plant via the dump station as pollutants. It is sewage from a dump station. It is sewage which is what the plant is designed to digest and treat. Any chemicals that are put into the holding tanks of the R Vs are designed to be compatible with plant operations. There are processes that his plant can do to accommodate the high strength waste that may be leading to the disruption of the influx from the large events in Marshall County and Argus. But to abruptly disrupt a service to this community with no other solutions is unfair and dangerous to the community of Marshall County. It will lead to folks, it will lead folks to discharge the sewage in dangerous ways. I would encourage the plant manager to work with I G M or a private consultant to address the influx from the dump station rather than to do away with the community service. Okay, right now, when it comes fair time, the people don't have any place to dump their sewage. So you may see some on the streets. You may see some, see kids running through it at the fairgrounds. I don't know. But those are things that happen. It's a service that's been provided by the town. The town puts a lot of money into the fairgrounds and with the help and things that they do. The consultants that I've talked to, as well as other plant managers, say that when you know you have an event, you start your process eight to 12 weeks ahead of time in your plant to help it be at its highest strength to take this. And then as you take it in, you slow it down, coming in and slow down the discharge so that it has more time to work. I guess I take offense at it as a citizen that we would do that to other citizens of our county when you bend over backwards to try to help everybody in your community. This is something that I think a I don't know how to say this to be politically correct, so I'm not going to worry about it. A person who is not thoroughly knowledgeable in those things and in what is going on with wastewater treatment. I know that he's certified, he's done his testing and that sort of thing, but I just don't think that he has an overall grasp of what can be done and what he should be doing for that. Would be my suggestion that you're going to miss the fair in order to get things back up and put together. But I would hope that by Labor Day weekend that you could have that reinstalled and perhaps get someone in to work with and trade. And I know that Christine would, I know that there's a private consultant that would do that, that knows plants inside him. And I hate to throw this on you, more than anything, I hate to throw it on Jamie because he's got his hands full right now. He's just, with all the things that are going on, he is a very, very busy person.
And I was just going to ask you, Jamie, do you have any comments on this?
You know, Mike brought this to me. We talked about it. You know, what he told me was logical. I told him to move forward with it. You know, he set the letters out. I thought they were going to put a cap in it. They went a little bit overboard on that. They filled it with foam and concrete and all that stuff. So I don't know what it's going to take to get it open back up. I do agree with Chuck that we need to look into it more and find out if it's a problem. We don't collect any revenue from, you know, anything over there. If they run a campground in there, we don't get anything out of it. So if there's a service that we want to provide, that's what we need to look at. One of the things we've talked about is maybe putting a thousand, or not us, but the fair would put a thousand, 2,000 gallon holding tank over there they could dump into and then, you know, they could hire a company to come suck it out as needed so that they have that volume there. I do know over the years, we have had the necardia problem out at the sewer plant. It seems to coincide with those events. You know, that's what I know about it.
So does it go away after?
We have chlorinated. Sometimes it takes months to do. I don't know that it's an expensive process. It's just timely. So I guess.
What's the capacity of the sewer plant right now?
I think we're about 55, 60% somewhere in there.
Yeah, some leeway in there.
Yeah.
And Jamie and I talked about it. We're probably not running, I don't know, how many gallons do we come up with? 50, 75 gallons per?
An average, yeah, an average camper's going to use 60 gallons at most. He usually have a 30, a 30 holding tank. So, you know, the black tank's the one you really got to worry about. But even if you got, you know, 50 trailers in there, 60 gallons, I mean, you're not talking.
3,000 gallons at a time, you know.
So I think if we look at it, maybe get a consultant in, look at it a little deeper. Maybe we put a holding tank or septic tank out there and then let it settle a little bit more and then every year or two years, they could have a pump wherever felt was necessary. But then that would give a cleaner effluent into the, you know, into the facility. But, you know, I think there's some intermediate steps and things that we can do to make it work for everybody.
So can we put, will we put a septic system tank out there?
It would just be a holding tank. It wouldn't be a septic.
Just be like a big plastic tank on top of the ground?
No.
Be in the ground.
Put it in the ground, okay.
So that when they dump, it goes down into it. We'd have a rise coming up of the lid. If that's the route we go to. You know, I think there's a little more research and things we need to put into it. But I would hope with your approval going forward that we would try to have something back in place by Labor Day weekend.
I met with a guy here, I don't know, a couple of weeks, a month ago or so. And this is what they specialize in, is helping with these things. He might be a good one in it to come in, help us kind of look at this. We may have some other issues that I don't know of, but if I bring him onto the plant. But if I bring him out to the plant, he can go through some stuff and maybe correct some other issues that we may have and give Mike some training. I don't know what we're going to find, but, you know, if I bring him in here to do this, there may be some added things that we can do as well.
I mean, that's, that sounds like the best route to go with right now.
I don't have any numbers or anything, but I can't imagine it'd be too outrageous.
No, no, of course not, but, I mean. I mean, I don't own a camper, I'm not a camper myself, I guess I camp in a tent, but I mean, is it, I mean, is it a big deal that you are able to dump your sewage on site like that?
Yeah, you have to dump it somewhere.
Of course, but I mean, is that a big deal to campers, I mean, is that something that is affordable?
If I could say, we used to do, we had two or three motorhomes, we'd go to state parks, state parks all have a dumping station.
Sure, sure.
But we also did trade shows and we would go up to Oshkosh to be one, and there was one in Florida, but up there, there was no dumping station, so you were there for a whole week. Hopefully, your holding tank held it all, then we had to come to a flying J at the time, which brought us almost down to Chicago before we even dumped it. And that was just us, there was like hundreds of people doing the same thing, so. It is, it's kind of a big deal for people that do this and, like you said, these people come, these are probably vendors and different things are in your Blueberry Festival, I don't, it could be just normal people, but yeah, they need some work to get rid of all of that so they don't have to haul it around.
I do want to point out one other thing, though, I mean, like I said, we're not collecting any revenue on this. So by us taking extra time, extra things, and that's putting on the other you know, people in town that are paying for their sewer rates.
I mean, would it really be too much to ask for the 4H?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Or the counties, other communities in the county, I mean, considering that we're helping contribute by hosting this, I mean.
And the fair board is hosting.
Fourth county, that's what I'm saying. They're collecting rent to have people stay within their campers. We don't see any of it, they're making money out of it, that's why they're doing it. But we don't see anything, but we're providing a service and it's being subsidized through our sewer rate payers.
So how about we request a stipend?
You don't get anything for the water?
We probably do at minimum, if we do. A lot of times, we don't read the water during that time of the year, we just read it during the fair, the way it's metered in there.
So what we could do is that, based on the recommendation of this individual that you invite, and on the total evaluation, we can create a stipend that we could charge.
If.
If, well, I mean, if we were to provide the service, obviously, I mean. Yeah.
Those are things we can. Those are all those questions we can ask and figure it out.
I don't think we have to have an answer today, just that we think that's the direction we want to go. And we'll, Jamie and I, I'll work with Jamie or whatever you want me to do.
Well, I'd like to see you get this individual and bring him down here and let him look at it, let him make kind of a determination both with our treatment plan and with theirs as to what could be done and, you know, how much would go into this, that would be a fantastic thing to do.
And as far as the fair contributing or not contributing, town does a lot of things for a lot of people. And to give a few bucks to the fair board is neither necessary. And the people that are at the fair, or even they come to that, come downtown.
I know.
You know, go to the hardware, whatever.
I think the town makes money during the fair, I'm not positive, I think it does. Go ahead, Jamie.
I'm not going either way, I just want to point that out, that, you know, that's how it is. I'm not saying we should go collect some crazy fees or anything, but.
We weren't either. Okay.
Let me get this right, right now, it's not even functional for the fair next week.
No.
No kidding.
But this, this letter.
You took the gun on us a little bit, didn't you?
Well, this letter was sent out March 11th, here we are in July. So this is the first year hearing of it. There's been time to do something if something wanted to be done. And I will say too, it was asking them to plug it up, to put a cap on it so it can be used, and it didn't get done, so.
They started to do it, but when they went to do it, it was already concreted up, they did not concrete that pipe up.
Oh, they didn't?
No, they did not.
Okay. I was told it was foamed and concreted, so.
Well, whoever did it was nobody from the fair board.
No, it wasn't.
Or anybody that works on the fair down there.
It was, it was our sewer plant operator.
Yeah.
No, but we've got to get all those before we leave.
Chuck, I have one question for you, if you don't mind entertaining it. And maybe this isn't in your area of expertise, but there's a couple areas around town that we've got some residential fencing issues. One place I know in particular is more a temporary snow fence type than anything, kind of looks kind of bad. Is there any town regulation or anything that you're aware of in the planning or zoning or anything in there that covers that and maintenance of, some of these fences are, you touch them, they fall apart.
Not ours.
We have fences and wall standards. Fences and walls may be constructed upon approval of the building from yet, and all zoning districts subject to conformance upon requirements. Fences and walls shall present a non-structural face outward. They can be embedded on any property line that is also not a right of way. Talks about where they can be placed. And this talks about height. So fences and walls should not exceed eight feet in height in any side of rear yard or ever any front yard. And that's what we got.
Do you have anything for maintenance of them or anything else?
I mean, it is their personal property, so it's their right to have their property as they wish.
But we have.
I mean, it sounds petty, it sounds, I mean, from what, hearing it from you guys' perspective, it sounds petty. But I understand if there's a health standard or some kind of hazard in that aspect, not simply just a fence.
No, we have ordinance for unsafe, unsightly and.
Sure, that's what I'm saying, if it presents some kind of hazard, I can understand that. But just simply aesthetics, that sounds petty. And I don't think that's our right as a municipality to force that on a property owner.
We already have that right. You give it out, you give that to your police, you give it out to your zoning officials.
But clearly, it's not stated in that book, that's what I'm saying.
It wasn't under fences. We have other ordinances that talks about talks about those things, I didn't have them by fingertips.
Sure, yeah, I mean.
No, we can, we can go out and get that fences structurally built the wrong way. Face has to be toward your neighbor, not toward you. A good side.
But why? Why waste the time or energy to do that?
Seems like some people have an issue, so. I mean, if I was a neighbor to somebody that had a snow fence, I probably wouldn't be happy about it. Would you?
I don't have a preference personally, it's their, it's their property, that's how I see it.
But it's on the property line of yours and theirs, so you have to see it all the time.
Sure.
I will, I do.
Sure, I can understand, I can understand, I can relate, I can understand.
Can we kind of let this go for a while?
Yeah.
I was just curious.
All right. So.
Sorry. I made a big deal.
I didn't mean to stir you up.
Oh, no, I made a big deal, I'm sorry.
So now, let's move on to.
I'm sorry.
No more questions, Sean.
Easy, Mark.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, the top five, the total docket for July 3rd is $315,286.52. The top five claims are as follows, number one is INPA at $139,055.44. Number two is Town of Argus payroll, number 13 at $37,016.21. Number three is Town of Argus water loan repayment at $25,000. Number four is Anthem Health Insurance, $22,866.96. And number five is Republic Services at $12,479.39. The top five claims total $236,418 and represent 75% of the total docket.
I move to accept claims 684 through 752.
I will second that.
We have a motion in a second to accept the claims, do you have any other further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Claims are accepted. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Jamie.
For TGIF next week, I cannot do it for the town, so if we do have a spot reserved, if anyone would like to represent the town, that would be great, I cannot do it this week. It's on the 22nd, October 12th.
I can't do it, my wife will be out of town.
I can do it.
So I'm running around here, but I could probably help in some, and I'm sure we could get some of the.
I have to make lobby jokes for the fire department.
Firemen and stuff there, we'll have, I think we have enough people to cover it, yeah. I hate to see it dissolve, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, I'm still working on it, so I can't commit to anything.
Yeah, I know. So now, do you have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn, any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.